With some strong arguments, otherwise I think I'm going to vote against this amendment. Thank you. Dr. K K Kwok.
Madam Deputy, I am speaking on clause seven as proposed by the administration. At the Bills Committee, there was not this amendment at first. The origin of this amendment was that we found that in the bill, with regard to remote distribution and the sale of liquor outside commercial premises like bars and restaurants. And if also there are privately organized parties where money is charged, then that might constitute a deficiency of the bill. And to plug the loophole, the administration is now proposing the two groups of amendments. The first group of amendments had to do with the people who might be employed by the purchaser or the seller, and this is a kind of defense for them. It was discussed at length at the Bills Committee and now there is this safeguard for employees who have no interest in the transaction. But the controversy is mainly about the second group of amendments. In future, the Department of Health or the so-called Liquor Control Office may seek a search warrant after complying with the conditions set by a magistrate. To be frank, Madam Deputy, very often magistrates issue search warrants. And this present amendment is no different from what it, what has been done so far. But I have seen pro-establishment members playing up the matter. And Secretary, I don't know whether it's you or the C E S' problem. Members who have spoken belong to your ruling coalition and many of them actually are in the Executive Council. They are saying they support the ban of sale of liquor to minors, but they have not covered the point of interest or benefit. Suddenly, pro-establishment members embrace human rights. As you know, or I'm not talking about the Liberal Party. I think we all appreciated what Mr. James Tian did when he was chairman of the Liberal Party. He did what Hong Kong people expected him to do in many matters, including Article twenty-three legislation. But suddenly, even D A B embraces human rights. Remember, when we discussed Article twenty-three legislation, they said we should have strict enforcement. And Junius Ho actually asked Carrie Lam when she would legislate for Article twenty-three. This is rather strange. We think there is some kind of schizophrenia at play here. But I don't find it strange anymore after observing this council for so many years. Talking about interest or benefit, they would only think about themselves. We are talking about millions and millions of dollars that are benefiting the sectors, the liquor-selling sector, the wine sellers, the bars, and also private parties, which purport not to be commercial. We are talking about billions and billions of dollars. So Secretary, open your wi, your eyes wide and see what your allies are talking about. Don't think that executive councillors will always support you. They only think about their own interests. This is one of the examples. I won't go into more examples. Years ago, the unconscionable medical advertisements bill was mooted. Mrs. Selina Chow was in the Executive Council and they objected to it vehemently. They tried to block it, no matter whether you were trying to protect the public. They tried to block you and then even if you wanted to go ahead with it, it was much narrowed down and they pushed back the commencement date. And here, you are lucky that they are not asking you to enforce the law only three, five, ten years down the road. They could have done it, you know. On the surface, they talk about morals and they talk about cirrhosis and protecting young people. But then there is a territory you cannot venture into because there will be a big impact on the se, sector and money is at stake. Mr. Shiu Ka-Fai represents his constituency. I understand where he comes from. But other people don't talk about justice and morals. But coming back, the administration has not done its job well. Secretary, you and your staff have not done enough publicity to the public. You have not explained the importance of the bill sufficiently and not even at the Bills Committee. I don't want to speculate the voting result because, as you know, when the administration proposes a bill, the parties who have a seat in Exco would always say they would support the administration no matter how outrageous the bill is. And the so-called opposition camp, who we are, we are always seen to be on the opposite side of the administration. But please do not embrace this kind of logic. See for yourself what is happening. I understand that in this bill and also with regard to this amendment, you want to plug loopholes in the law. So that when there are controversies, the bill will empower inspectors of the Department of Health who can seek a search warrant from magistrates. As you know, they are not policemen. They are not the customs or exise and they do not have weapons. They are people who fear that they may be beaten up. They are just like the T C O staff who have been beaten up. Some of them had their heads bashed. It is not easy for them to enter into domestic premises. In fact, the bill proposes to have these inspectors seek a search warrant. And this is not anything new. The laws have always allowed this to be done, even since the colonial era. The difference today is the sale of liquor compared to drug trafficking and other dangerous acts. Sale of liquor is different and that is why it is controversial. What is most regrettable to me is that the administration has taken out other amendments that they should have included. I agree with Mr. Shiu, for example, that at selling points, you should state clearly that it is against the law to sell liquor to a minor and any infringement would attract imprisonment terms. In fact, at the Bills Committee, I had also said that we should include the health warning that underage drinking poses serious health hazards. Did you listen? You didn't. You didn't listen to me. And maybe the secretary thought that, look, let us do it halfway so that your friends would support you. Now see for yourself what is happening. They still would not support you even if you do it halfway because they are thinking about their own interests. We are talking about billions of dollars. The same goes for this bill and an other bill that is coming to us and that is about medical appliances. Dr. K K Kwok, please speak to the clause. Yes, I'm coming back to clause seven. I'm just citing an example that the administration has trusted the wrong people with this bill. Chairman, you also proposed the medical appliances bill to protect consumers. It's just like clause seven here. You want to protect young people, but you are not going to succeed because it's about interests. The pro-establishment camp, the loyalists, may pay lip service to justice and morals. But we all know in our hearts, they have financiers and bosses behind their back. They would say, please give us a hand. This is going to affect our sector. We are going to lose lots of money. Please shroud it in some high-sounding morals and veto it. I believe the administration should learn a lesson. First, don't take anything for granted. Don't think you have allies whom you can rely on. You don't have any. Money and interest is their ally. Secondly, you need to work harder. There were not many members in the Bills Committee, but if you had spoken to the public and other members of the council earlier and explained to us your motives and reassure us that you would be very careful with enforcement and that it is not very different from other laws and also the magistrate would just issue search warrants according to the stated conditions, then everything would be clear. But now, at the very end of the scrutiny of the bill and you try to start a discussion, it would be very difficult. And you have stepped into soft mud. This bill is just a tip of the iceberg. It's just like the private healthcare organizations bill. Once you infringe upon the interest of the cosmetic sector, if you want to control the equipment they use, you know there are listed companies involved. It will be so difficult for you. You can't buckle just because the pro-establishment camp is looking after the interests of certain people. You might think if you step back a little, if you don't issue the health warning, they will support you. But look at what they are doing. They are not supporting you. Dr. Kwok, please come back to clause seven. Yes, I'm coming back to clause seven. This has to do with how the administration would like to improve the law. Secretary, you have to understand this. Even if you have high ideals, even if medically you think you should ban the sale of liquor to minors, of course, that is not debated in the medical sector. We, of course, object to the sale of liquor to minors. And actually, I would say that you should mount a, a, a massive campaign to talk about the evils of drinking. What you are doing is not enough. A few years ago, you removed the duty on red wine and you actually sent out a very conflicting message to society. And in fact, you are harming yourself now. People said, why we don't talk about democracy and human rights? But I do hope that when we mention those, when it comes to Article twenty-three, every one of you in that camp would stand up to say you defend human rights in Hong Kong. Don't quote human rights out of context and use it to object to the administration because of interests. And then, as Mr. Junius Ho was saying, he is asking when Article twenty-three legislation will be enacted. He claims to be patriotic. He is asking this to be done tomorrow. And does he love the country or does he love money? Dr. Kwok, please come back or else you have to stop. No, I'm talking about clause seven because it's going to affect people's pocket. That is why some people are objecting it by quoting a moralistic high ground. In fact, they should be supporting the administration. It is their nature to support the administration because they are pro-establishment. But we have no, nothing to gain. It has nothing to do with us. Even if people sell liquor or not sell liquor and the administration is not going to give us any advantages, but we don't want them. Please don't let us have any advantages. But we should really debate the issue as it is. We are talking about the banning of sale of liquor to people under eighteen. There are the justifications and they are easy to understand. You can play ignorant. You can say you do not understand. So you distort the original intent of the legislation. Mr. Shiu Ka-Fai. Chairman, this is the third time I have spoken, but I would still like to rise to say something. After listening to Dr. K K Kwok, he said just now that we are doing this for the interest of the sector. And that is why we are vetoing the amendment. As I said in my speeches, I said very clearly that I represent the retail and wholesale sector, including people who sell liquor. Until this day, I have not heard any shop or any businessman telling me that they support the sale of liquor to minors. And that is why I have always said we support the bill.
It's just that we are worried that if domestic premises can be inspected, we think if we open this store previously, would be a concern to many people. And therefore, we do not agree to this particular amendment. But if you say that you ask businesses not to sell liquor to li, to minors, I have been saying that they are agreeable. So I disagree with Dr. Kwok very much when he said that this is for business interests or that the pro-establishment camp should always support the government. I've said that pro-establishment members are always pragmatic and real, and realistic. We can tell which is right, which is not right. And even today, we have even Exco members commenting on the bill and the amendments. Well, if you are not right, of course, we'll vote against the proposal. And we can tell the people of Hong Kong that whether we are pragmatic and realistic. Mr. Tommy Chong, Chairman. But there's nothing, really nothing new in Dr. Kwok Kei's remarks. I have to respond to, to him. When it comes to schizophrenia, I think you know, President, as well as I do, that the people always stand on high moral grounds and talk about civic rights. But suddenly, the champion of democracy supports the search of a person if he suspects that there is a packet of secret on you. So they don't care about the details if the provision is good for them. See, if I'm criticized as a, someone suffering from schizophrenia, I think he has a more serious schizophrenic condition than mine. I said that Mrs. Shiu Ka-Fai represent the constituents as is right, that he speaks out for them. But I'm also representing the, the relevant sector. And I don't know why the, his constituents should continue to support him. Last time, we have a Mr. Dr. Liang Ka-Lao. This, this guy, this time, we have a Dr. Chan. I have no problem that they are representing their constituents. But I just don't have issues with people who have problems with financial, functional constituency members saying that we are always just safeguarding the interests of constituents. He's, he's from a geographical constituency. What about his personal interests? Has anyone lodged a complaint against Dr. Kwok to the Medical Council of Hong Kong? That's why he's against having more members in the Medical Council. Well, I have a lot of reservations about his, his comments. He's talked about this as something that would affect the sectors, the relevant sectors' interests. Well, the representatives are Mrs. Shiu Ka-Fai and I myself. They are convenience stores and restaurants and retailers and the like. Have they raised any objection to the bill? We are now talking about the, the power to enter domestic premises to collect evidence. Who are my constituents? Who would get a, a benefit from this? Or do I have a benefit to gain or Mr. Shiu Ka-Fai has a benefit to gain if I sue those unauthorized seller of liquor? Well, actually, if we allow these unauthorized operations to go on, our constituents will be affected because the, the, the legitimate businesses have to pay rent. But if you operate a business in your home, you don't pay any. I don't know whether the Dr. Kwok has thought through the matter and whether he is aware of our, our comments. As a legal member, we should represent the public and tell the government whether this is a good bill or not. And we should lobby other people to agree with us. And I already said yesterday that it's inappropriate to present a bill without, with amendment here without telling us what it's about. So I would like to advise the secretary to, to withdraw this amendment under forty-four A. Mrs. Regina Yeap. A this amendment to clause seven, a this group of amendment unexpectedly has resulted in a rather fierce argument. And the pro-establishment camp members think that this is disproportionate. It's a violation of human rights. Well, that really is dependent on the values you have. The U S is a democratic country. And the U S adopts a very tough position in combating underage drinking. The age limit there is twenty-one. The, the, people under eighteen can drive a car. They can get a driving license. You can drive youngsters at sixteen or seventeen can drive a car. But you can only buy liquor if you're over twenty-one. That's the prohibition era. That's the, in the nineteen, the ten, early twentieth century. The first generations are puritans and therefore they do not like to see drinking becomes a problem. But they have second, high school students killed by the binge drinking and even the driving under the influence of alcohol causing fatalities. So selling is not allowed, is prohibited, and even consumption is strictly regulated. Therefore, amended laws to ensure this. So that a lot would depend on whether you'd regard underage drinking as a serious problem. I hope the secretary would tell us that from the health protection perspective, why is it that we need to regulate the sale of liquor to the underage people? And why you may need to collect evidence from domestic premises? Do you think that the problem is not so serious as to warrant conducting a search in domestic premises? Or do you regard this as a potential, serious potential problem so that the C and E department should be authorized to conduct a search in domestic premises? As regards the point that this is an infringement of privacy, although I don't have all the information I've got with me, but I think I can get the information from the Security Bureau. Many other laws have authorized law enforcement officers to conduct investigation and searches in domestic premises, such as cases involving illegal immigrants and also drug trafficking cases. Because by the time you apply for a warrant, it may be too late. Maybe the sentiment, the atmosphere in the community has changed. People now adopt a more relaxed attitude towards drinking. And it's considered an infringement of privacy if you allow officers to enter domestic premises. But I'm saying that this is not going to be a major problem because a warrant from the magistrate is required. I think the, the government's proposed amendment should be supported. The New People's Party will support it. I'm, I'm, I'm very unhappy that some people have demonized Article twenty-three legislation. As if Mr. Junius Ho's reminder that the government should enact laws on Article twenty-three, twenty-three is a major crime. Yes, if it's a monster, I'm very dissatisfied with such remarks. Mrs. Shiu Ka-Fai said on that day, or back then, one of the reasons why people oppose the Article twenty-three legislation is about the power to enter domestic premises. Well, at that point, the government's proposal was that a warrant issued by superintendent of police would be required. If you want to conduct criminal investigations, there's no way you can avoid entering domestic premises. But subsequently, because of the public concern, the level of authorization was elevated to a more senior police officer to offer more protection to the public. I would like to take this opportunity to clarify things. And I'm, want to raise my objection to the smearing done by some members about Article twenty-three legislation. Mr. Houghton Chow, Chairman. Well, I heard Dr. Kwok Kei's speech and I'm angered by that. That's why I want to speak again. I have also heard Mrs. Regina Yeap's speech. For the second group of amendment, that is the power to enter domestic premises. Maybe I have a, a different views, but I respect her views because she has been putting forth arguments based on certain justifications and grounds. So that this debate is a quality debate. I respect her views. She has told us why she thinks that a certain position is should be supported. For example, in other laws, law enforcement officers are authorized to apply for a search warrant from a magistrate before entering the domestic premises. That is true, of course. Under the P D P O, there is a similar arrangement. And yesterday, I mentioned the noise control legislation. There is a similar provision. Noise is a special issue. Because actually, sometimes a noise is created in domestic premises causing nuisance. But generally speaking, well, for, for, speaking from my own perspective and values, the question is really about the weight one gives to certain values from, based on my values that I embrace. If we are, we were talking about the drug trafficking or anti-terrorism offenses, then it's, it's really acceptable to empower officers to enter private, private premises. But although it's an offense, just going to be an offense to sell liquor to minors and we need to regulate it by, by law, but would that in extent? But would that in extend to the need to enter private uh premises? It's a question about proportionality. We may have different views about where the uh line should be drawn. That explains why I do not support the second group of amendment, which would allow the law enforcement officers to uh collect evidence in domestic premises. And I'm saying that what we should focus on regulating the business of on-street shops and businesses. And a person, we do not have uh any evidence that many the people are operating business of selling liquor from their domestic premises. And I believe the government is doing this in a haze. It's a disproportionate measure. And that's why I cannot support the second group of amendment to empower uh officers to enter domestic premises. Chairman, I'm angered by what I've heard uh from Miss Doctor Guok K. Well, he's trying to the wrong us through the of a false argument. He he's accusing us of blindly supporting the government since we are poor establishment. And if we do not support government proposals, we will be doing that for sectoral interests or other the uh interests.
So he just tries to wrong us. That's what he did in his fifty minutes. He just um um lashed out criticisms on on us without some grounds. So in his eyes, whatever we do is wrong. But then they, the opposition camp, is right in whatever they do. That sums up what he's saying. No, really, in this chamber, we shouldn't have members like that, wronging people, um wrongly labeling people and um confusing right and wrong, misleading the public and so on. Now, I and Mister Tommy Jung were following his speech attentively. As members of this council, it is our job to study a government bill in detail. We want to find out if there's any problems with the bill. Now, we support the legislative intent of the bill, but when it comes to the details, we have the duty to study them. If we see a problem, we raise it. And then we tell the government. If the government withdraws it, fine. If the government does not withdraw it, then we cannot support it. When we just have to tell you, we have to vote against this particular amendment. But for the bill as a whole, we support it and we've said it many times. I don't think there is ever a member. I don't think so. There's not a member. Well, if there is, he should say so. I don't think there's ever a member here in this chamber that says that we shouldn't legislate to prohibit the sale of liquor to people under eighteen. No one has ever said so. Now, since yesterday, many members have spoken and they've made it clear. They believe this bill is well-intentioned. That is, the government would like to prohibit the sale of liquor to people under eighteen because we want to protect young people. We don't want them to um become addicted or to alcohol, which will affect them. So we all in support of this principle. So there's no need for Doctor KK Quark to put labels on us. So it needs to be put on the hand side. Otherwise, many years later, when people read the hand side, they will think what he said was true and right. You know, Chairman, many people are following this debate live on TV. But then he is saying all this gibberish. He is wronging us and I'm not asking him to retract what he said. Uh because I don't want to waste time. And he did name the DAB too. So I'm being very tolerant. I have not asked him to retract all his accusations against the A B just now. Now, honestly, he could go this far. And depart so much from the truth. Now, as a member of this council, it is our duty to see if there's a problem with the bill. I think the that there is a question of proportionality. So I'm telling you, it's not right. And then you wrongly accuse us to say that we're just trying to protect some interests. Now, haven't you gone too far, Quok K? I don't know if Quok K knew what he said was totally offensive to many members here, especially those who were are in the bills committee, uh working very hard on the bill and giving their views and suggestions on the bill. And now I haven't even asked him to apologize. Chairman, I hope for people who are following this debate on TV, they're able to tell right from wrong. This council can perform its job only if we all focus on issues. Now, if you don't subscribe to my view, you could advance your arguments too. That's how it should work in this council. As I said just now, Mrs Ip may have a different view than mine on this amendment about entering domestic prices uh premises to collect evidence. Fine, she could advance her arguments so we could have a debate here. But it's not what should be done like uh Quok K. He just accuses us wrongly and he is taking things out of all proportion. Now, every day in this chamber, if we allow people like him to do this, to go, um you know, or um totally out uh to to do that, and there's no way we can get anything done in this council. Not even to mention that we can make any improvements here or progress here. Now, I must stress again, I support the bill as a whole. And we also support the first group of amendments. Because then um for those who are only involved in delivery, they should be exempted from criminal liability. So we support that. For the the second group of amendment, we've stated our case very clearly as to why we oppose it. So we don't want Doctor Quok K to wrongly accuse us that we're trying to protect sectoral interests, blah, blah, blah. Um I think it's in the simplest term, it's just that this is not such a serious offense that we should allow law enforcement officers to enter private homes to collect evidence. So it's a matter of proportionality and we need to keep this line carefully. Now, if it's a serious crime, then we can understand, but this is not the case here. And then it's not the case that we have seen many people are engaging in such activities on domestic premises. No, we don't see that. So for this second group of amendment to allow law enforcement agents to go into private homes, collect evidence, we are against that and that's it. So I submit. Chairman, I can see why someone could spark such um a wave of protest. Um Doctor Quok K just spoke and now many members want to speak. As Holden Chow just said, in the eyes of the Democrats, whatever we do, it is wrong. Now, we are doing our job to debate this bill. And then some accuse us of filibustering to try to stall business in this council. But now Doctor Quark has spoken and everyone else wants to wants to speak. I'd like to speak on the two groups of amendment. For the first group of amendments, the F T U supports them. For the second group of amendment, whereas F T U has considered it for a long time, we've had a long discussion. It's only this morning that we finally agree that we cannot support the second group of amendment. But of course, uh it's not for the reasons that um uh Quok K imposed on us, that is, we try to protect sectoral interests. What sectoral interest is there for us? We're just talking about a point of law. Now, it seems, I would say that it seems that Holden Chow has done a better job than the government in lobbying us. Even last night, I was debating with him. But um now we agree what Holden Chow says makes more sense than what the government says. So in your um lobbying work or explaining a position, I think the government has to learn from Holden Chow. Now, members, uh some members agree uh with Holden Chow, who questioned whether it should be easy for the government, for for uh for inspectors to go into someone's home. But I'm the more conservative type. I I thought because there's need for magistrate's search warrants, so I'm not too concerned initially. Anyway, whether this amendment is passed or not, uh I hope after the passage of the bill, you will conduct a review as soon as possible. I hope you will monitor the sales situation to see whether uh it's going to be a problem with domestic premises as you have worried about. If so, then you could immediately move an amendment. But now I have to refute what uh Quok K said. Uh just now, Tommy Chan mentioned another case about the medical registration bill. Uh we uh had a discussion then, and then he asked whether Doctor uh Quok K was ever as um um subject of complaint at the medical council. But uh I I don't know, I don't have the record, but it seems that he was involved in um uh complaint of malpractice by someone. But anyway, um we we just focus on issues, not um people. But then Quok K does the opposite. Anyway, through this debate, we're able to lay on the table all our arguments, and I hope the government would learn from this experience. That is, uh uh in the community stage, I'm I'm sure you've he- heard uh the views of members loud and clear. For the second group of amendment, whether it's passed today or not, I hope after the passage of the bill, the government will conduct a review as soon as possible. And as some members mentioned, KK Quark was just using this subject as pretext to blow things out of proportion. I just want to tell members, don't be angry. You know, if you've been following Quok K's speech, it's always the same, that you are lawless, are lousy, are evil. You 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 you, if you don't listen to the government, you don't support governments must be because there are interests involved. There's always his um way of thinking, so you don't need to um get angry with him. Otherwise, you lose out. You know, and and he has such a small vocabulary. You know, he always uses the same terms to say that we're shameless, we are loyalists and so on. So I don't know why people care so much to listen, to 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 follow his speech. And I I don't usually can get in what he said. But since, uh but then I see many of you just jumped at him now, trying to refute him. I just want to take this opportunity to um remind my pro-establishment camp colleagues, there's no need to take it serious with him. There's no need to be enraged by him. So let's just focus on this bill. Now, for the second group of amendment, as I said, whether it's going to be passed or not, the government should conduct a review as soon as possible. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you, Chairman. Doctor Loai Quoc. Thank you, Chairman. Uh Ms Alice Mac said that she's always fortunate that she didn't get to hear Quok K's speech. Well, I'm unfortunate, I I don't have as much luck. I I heard his speech, so I have to get things off my chest. Now, Quok K um actually was um making a jumbo speech and he um criticized people with no grounds. It's really um insufferable in a way. Now, I don't know, there is a trade in Hong Kong that is the sales of alcohol from home. And I don't know which member here represents that particular trade, so they have to speak up for the trade. Now, Quok K said the pro-establishment colleagues are trying to protect certain interests. That's why we're against this amendment. And he's wrong in a number of ways. Firstly, um this, I heard the speech of other pro-establishment camp members, including even myself. We spoke in support of the bill. All we are against is the second group of amendment. So it's about allowing the collection of evidence on domestic premises. Now, why we're against it? Because we think that's disturbing to the public. And also, we honestly do not see there is this trade called um sales of alcohol from home. Maybe there are isolated cases, but let's say if there are criminal activities at uh on in domestic premises, under the current mechanism, I'm sure such scenarios could be covered. The police could certainly ob- obtain a search warrant from court.
Therefore, we have explained our views very clearly with regard to the second group of amendments, and there is no involvement of interests whatsoever. However, Doctor KK Quark has departed from his usual style. When he spoke just now, he was so sympathetic to the administration. And he said that even if we had this clause, the administration would still act with caution. And if later on, we have to legislate on other bills and if Doctor KK Quark and his colleagues would still treat the administration and law enforcement agencies with such a positive attitude, that would be to the benefit of the public. But I think he was speaking for the sake of smearing others. And I don't think that he was really satisfied that the administration would be prudent in enforcing the law. So I speak. Does any other member wish to speak? Mister Horace Jung? Chairman, I listened to my camp upstairs, and I believe Mister Holden Chow was very much agitated. As you know, we are debating issues here in the chamber and we should not be putting words into other people's mouths. Well, as far as I know, doctors should be looking after the physical health of people. But it doesn't mean that you can hurt the feelings of Hong Kong people. I expect doctors to do that, each and every one of them. Just now, Doctor KK Quark criticized pro-establishment members for safeguarding their own interests. And that is why we are doing this and that with this clause. Well, as I agree, we are doing this for interest, for the interest of the Hong Kong people. Otherwise, what are we doing here? We are debating this dutyable commodities amendment bill twenty seventeen. We are debating whether the amendments would do good or bad to Hong Kong people. Before this is debated at council, DAB members held meetings to debate whether we should accept the proposals in the bill. We even had meetings with the administration to debate whether this was good or bad for Hong Kong people. So if you say we did it for interest, yes, you are extremely right, but you left out a few words, and that is interest of the Hong Kong people. Mister Chairman, in fact, Mister Holden Chow emphasized this a few times already, and that is, our main worry is that with regard to inspectors applying for a search warrant from the court to search domestic premises. We support the direction and spirit of the bill. Drinking, it is bad for young people. This is our concern, and the DAB supports the administration's work in this regard. But as I said, Chairman, when we debate whether we should authorize inspectors, we are not talking about police inspectors. Debate whether we should authorize inspectors, we are not talking about police inspectors. Whether F E H D inspectors should be given the authority to apply for a search warrant to search domestic premises. The issue itself is neutral, but we try to think about the consequences and whether. This power should indeed be given. See, if we authorize government officials to go into domestic premises. That should raise the eyebrow of every household. When people hear that the government can enter your home to make a search, everybody would. Sit up straight and listen carefully. Of course, it's something very urgent. Or it is an important matter, then we can accept that it is a good policy. But on this one, Chairman, we are aware of one situation. Um that is. Selling liquor to minors at home. Do we see this very often? Or as a social phenomenon? If we see it happening all the time and that it is a social problem. Then, of course, authorizing inspectors to search domestic premises should be done urgently. However. Is this already a social problem? Or is the administration being preemptive by seeking the authorities so that they can tackle such a situation in the future? If that's the case, I think this is premature. And its impact would be out of proportion. This is what the DAB is trying to say, and that is whether the proposal is proportionate. We have serious queries about that. Well, we are aware that the administration said. That this is not going to be an arbitrary authorization, because the inspectors still have to apply. For a search warrant from a magistrate. So there is judicial supervision. And then, and only then can they enter domestic premises, and they asked us to rest assured. Chairman, I am a lawyer. You know. How it is when you apply for a search warrant from a magistrate. And only by so doing will you understand whether this is an effective way to prevent what we don't want to see happening. First of all. This is an expat application. When intelligence is received by a law enforcement agency, say through a complaint. That somebody has flouted Hong Kong laws in domestic premises, then. There can be this expat application. When the magistrate hears the application. The owner of the domestic premises concerned will not be present because he doesn't know you are making that application. So he cannot argue against the application. When the magistrate. Processes the application, he only hears expat information. And usually, it's always the same thing, saying we received information showing that someone. Is breaking the law at a certain domestic premises. That is the information. Chairman, if I or you were the magistrate. Do you think you should. Approve the search warrant? We are not talking about prosecuting or convicting people, but it is just about starting an investigation. Given the position of the magistrate and given the limited. Information, usually, a search warrant will be granted so the administration. Can gather evidence for investigation. That is something rather natural. Let us look at figures. The success rate of application will show you. Whether the mechanism is such an effective mechanism for monitoring. The application of search warrants, and so the public will be assured. Well, I have grave reservations about that, Chairman. Secondly. What do you want to search? The administration has not convinced me even now. The amendment is to allow inspectors to enter domestic premises to take a look whether. Anyone is selling liquor to minors. The law is you should not sell liquor to minors. The question is. You have this warrant, you go into domestic premises, what can you search? I ask the administration. Very often, you go into people's houses. Okay, you see wine. You see wine stored at domestic premises. And secondly, what would you probably see? You see a few miners. And then you hold this warrant, you go into domestic premises. Do you expect to see the sale of liquor to minors per se? Okay, you see wine, you see miners. But would that be sufficient evidence for you to take out prosecution that someone is selling liquor to miners? The administration said, no, we are going to check whether there are transaction records. We might even. Check the computer to see whether there are transactions. Well, I don't know. I mean. How many eighteen-year-olds in Hong Kong can apply for a credit card? If there is credit card information, but if it is a minor of fourteen to fifteen years old, he has a credit card and he buys liquor. Well, okay, that is some kind of evidence, but is is that happening in Hong Kong? Does that mean a miner would buy liquor in Hong Kong with a credit card? What kind of records do you expect? If you see cash, would cash be sufficient evidence? The sale of liquor is not unlawful, but the sale of liquor to minors is. So this time around, you want to establish a mechanism whereby search warrants can be applied for. To search domestic premises in order to prevent the sale of liquor to minors. Will that search warrant help you to achieve your policy objective? The administration. Has not yet convinced me up till this day that your mechanism can achieve the stated objective. But if you say we want to make the bill comprehensive because we have tackled. Non-domestic premises, and we want to add domestic premises to complete it. However, as the discussion goes on. You may see that we authorize you to do this, but you are not going to achieve your policy objective. So why do we want to do that? I give you the authority, but then you do not achieve your policy objective. And we. Will already infringe upon people's privacy because you are going into domestic premises. That is a price to pay. Well, this is not a social problem, and you may not be able to search and gather what you want to gather. By using this authority. So why do it? If I. Want to support it, I will have to come clean to the people of Hong Kong. So, Chairman. In her reply, the secretary really needs to try to convince counselors. Why this C S A is worth our support? I have emphasized that. We are not negating the good work done by the administration. On this dutyable commodities amendment bill twenty seventeen. As I said at the outset. We want to protect minors so they would not be physically harmed by liquor. It is timely for the administration to act now. We appreciate it. We recognize the good work. But at the committee stage. We have to deal with the C S A of application for a search warrant, and we believe this will not achieve any. Purpose, and in fact, this has not become a commonplace social problem. When I read public administration, Chairman, I remember my professor say that if we want to study. A public administration policy, first we need to see whether this is a systematic or systemic rather social problem. And whether it would warrant a public administration solution. If it is not. If we go for such wide authorities. I believe we should exercise caution. I hope that in her reply. The secretary can advance convincing arguments for members to consider. Whether we should support the C S A. But at this moment, I can tell the secretary, Chairman. That the DAB at this moment remain to be convinced. I hope the secretary can respond more to this point. I so speak.
Mister Wong Ting Kwong, thank you, Chairman. D B has always been very practical and we. Will uh support things that are worthy of support regarding uh this amendment. Uh to uh the ordinance and uh in the sale of intoxicating. Liquor to a miners, uh it should be banned. And then we have. Discussed this amendment in depth for uh the application of a search warrant for. Entry into domestic premises. We have uh considered the issue in a very responsible manner. We're not like some members here. I don't know who have modeled them. I like to pinpoint the remarks by Doctor Quakaki in particular. What he said was. Well, I won't say shameful, but pathetic. We are here to discuss policy issues. We have detailed discussions with the administration, setting out the uh justifications. Please don't forget that. Quakaki. Today and yesterday. When discussing this amendment. Had the. Had um members in his own camp, including Mister Chan Chi Chin, who uh. Think differently from Quakaki. So he was pathetic. I don't know what. Alterior motive he has. These are livelihood matters. These are provisions governing livelihood matters. I don't know why he has. Smear. The discussions like this. When we were considering the bill on protection of endangered species, we talked about protection of ivory. So really, nothing good can come out of. Bad element. So he mentioned. D A B. Now, I don't want to mention uh the political party. Quakaki belongs to. I'm just talking about him. Uh Holden Chow asked us not to. Not to accept his apology. No, let it be put on record. Let uh his um bad impression be left here. What is his motive of doing such things in this council? Relation to clause seven of uh and the amendments, we have expressed our views as said by Ms Alice Mac. This is. Caused a rippling effect. This has caused a public outcry. I come here to speak. To say that uh Quakaki is pathetic. I don't want to say any further. Thank you. Does any member wish to speak? Mister Chen Han Pan. Chairman. I think um. Quakaki is a speculator. He has nothing but politics left. This bill is a livelihood matter bill, and yet he has. Talked about uh Article twenty-three legislation and uh the business sector and. Uh how they have only eyes for money. When we scrutinized the um medical practitioner amendment bill. Quakaki and also a former member cared nothing for the interests of the community. The bill sought to add a few more representatives to the medical council, including those from patients' groups. It sought to open up the medical council a little bit, and Quakaki filibustered. All the way until the bill was supported. And as for opening up. Uh the medical sector to allow overseas registered doctors to practice in Hong Kong to. Uh alleviate the manpower shortage, he did not accept it. So myself and D A B have this observation. If the medical practitioner amendment bill was passed. His personal interest would at once be affected. So that's. Conflict of interest. We uh uh read from media reports that he uh was uh. Sued by another party. I don't know what was the outcome. He say has said that uh. There was settlement outside of court. I hope he would come down to explain. Holden Chow and myself would like to uh. Try to stop underage. Persons to buy intoxicated liquor and to prevent unscrupulous merchants uh from selling liquor to. Underage persons. Even uh Mister Shiu Ka Chen, who represents the industry. Has no objection to this amendment. Uh even his industry has no objection to the bill. So. I think uh Quakaki is so poor that he has only politics left. I don't know how come he has uh got this idea. Of course, he uh left after making such a speech, and there is no one from the opposition camp here. Only the pro-establishment members are here. So uh when we discussed political issues, all of them were here, but when. It comes to livelihood issues, none of them are present. All right. This amendment is about. Allowing inspectors or authorized persons to search domestic premises. We are talking about a trade-off. A rather, a transaction. That is uh in the process of uh selling liquor to an underage person. It it is an offense. And what is the point of allowing an inspector to enter domestic premises? Now, if I'm an inspector, or if Holden Chow were an inspector, why would he want to come into my home? What if uh there were things missing in my home? Should I hold him responsible? Now, these inspectors, have they been trained to conduct search operations in domestic premises? How are you going to hire inspectors with such knowledge? Now, if we authorize them in law to do that. Now, can they cope with the situation inside domestic premises? This is an issue for uh police officers when they have a search warrant. They can enter domestic premises to conduct search operations. They have uh uh the necessary force to tackle. Untoward happenings inside domestic premises. But these inspectors. If they are allowed this power. Or they authorized to handle scenarios with force? No, we only authorize them to. Uh enter premises to search, but we have nothing to protect the personal safety. Isn't this ridiculous? Well, uh there might uh be a group of young people and uh liquor is present, you have suspicion. You ask an inspector to go in, you are not aware or you're not sure of the situation inside the domestic premises. And if he uh has the power and doesn't exercise it, it will be criticized by the Ambassman's office. And if he doesn't know how to tackle the situation, he may call the police. Then it will be the police. Who are entering the domestic premises to search. So D A B is very meticulous. When we uh consider. When we consider this amendment, we felt that it was unnecessary. So in this council, when we consider whether it is necessary to allow inspectors the authority to conduct search inside domestic premises, what is he to look for? For instance, Holden Chow for sure must have a few bottles of wine at home. And for sure, he has someone who is underage at home. Does that prove that someone has sold intoxicating liquor to an underage person inside his home? No, the logic is not sound. So if an inspector is allowed the power to enter domestic premises, you have to think what he can do and what he is expected to do. And this is exactly what Holden Chow said. Concerns we raised have not yet been addressed and the government hasn't been able to give us a clear account of things. Our observations are so meticulous. And this is, of course, not obvious to Kwakwaki because he's so poor that he has only got politics left. When it comes to politics, he will hold on to his script, which he has used for five years. I have worked with him in this council for five years and every time he will use the same expressions, calling people shameful, call people unprofessional and people only have eyes for money. And usually, he will scold government officials and his political opponents fiercely. I have no respect for such people. If you can use your arguments to satisfy us, that is good enough. But if you have none and you can only resort to such language, it's useless. You are not a good legislator. A good legislator should stand on the side of other people. Just when we dealt with the Medical Practitioner Amendment Bill, we should stand on the side of community interest. Here, we all talk about this power to be given to inspectors. And before we do so, we should consider very carefully. And we have the view that the power is unnecessary and that's why we have advanced our viewpoints again, which I think are reasonable. So far, no one has been able to explain to me why inspectors should be authorized to do so. What can they do? And if they find young people and also intoxicating liquor is there, what can that prove? Now, as soon as you go in, of course, the persons inside will stop what they are doing and just look at the inspector. So can you just jot down the names of the supplier of liquor and also the names of persons inside is useless? This is a futile move. As I said yesterday, the Ambassman's Office said that for undercover operation, age operations, the police, I mean, the administration has been reluctant to take such operations, even for unscrupulous taxi drivers. There have been very few arrests and successful convictions for undercover operations. They are, the government is reluctant to do them. And now you ask the inspectors to go into domestic premises to carry out undercover operations. So I hope the administration can explain to us more clearly to let the public understand why this power to enter into domestic premises is needed and the procedures to follow. And is it true that once the bill is enacted, we can all be affected by this power? We have to sort this out and you have to tell us the motive behind this amendment. Thank you. Mister Tommy Chong, Chairman. Miss Alice Mac just now said that she was lucky. She just missed Kwakwaki's speech and Lo Wai Kwok said the same. But I was in a different situation. When I was walking out, I heard Chow smoke smearing us, calling us filibustering. Now, if you haven't sat here to listen very carefully on what we have to say and call us filibustering, well, I won't call them barking, although the year of the dog is just around the corner. Now, if I were to filibuster here, now we need only twenty members here to form a quorum. So we could leave, just like the Pandemocrats save and accept me. So that I can ask for a quorum count and then the meeting will be aborted. I'm sure that there will be fewer than twenty to come in on their side. And that shows that we're not filibustering. How dare Doctor K K Kwok said something like that? And I think that it's really unpalatable for the secretary to hear such remarks from him, even if he is supporting the government. So I really have pity for Miss Alice Mac and Doctor Lo Wai Kwok. I don't think that I am being lucky or not. I think for the whole of Hong Kong, it's really Hong Kong's misfortune for a member to say something like this. Does any other member wish to speak? If not, I now invite the Secretary for Food and Health to speak again. Chairman? First of all, I thank members who spoke last night and this morning on the amendments. They have given us their views and their valuable thoughts. And I reiterate once again that I am moving this amendment to amend class seven of the bill in relation to the need of enforcement in future and also based on the suggestion and consideration by the Bills Committee. We also understand that there are concerns from members, in particular, in relation to the second group of amendments. Now, for the first group of amendments, many members seem to support it. They find it reasonable. Of course, there are other members who have suggested that next time at the Bills Committee, we can we should give a clear account before we have this debate in the chamber. I want to reiterate that, in fact, there was a thorough discussion of the amendments at the Bills Committee. And I thank Mister Yu Se Wing for other Bills Committee members for giving us a lot of comments. Now that the bill has resumed its second reading along with the amendments, this is the fruit of the discussion then. The Bills Committee did not object to the committee stage amendments proposed at the committee, at the Bills Committee stage. And based on this agreement that the administration should move these amendments, we now resume the second reading of the bill. And some members questioned whether inspectors should be allowed to gain entry into domestic premises for gathering evidence. Well, of course, at the Bills Committee stage, there wasn't much controversy around this issue. And the controversies, in fact, later arose. The Bills Committee has also indicated its support for the resumption of a second reading of the bill. Although there is no precedence for the government to withdraw the amendment so proposed before the second reading of the bill is resumed, we therefore would proceed with moving the amendments so that powers will be delegated with inspectors to apply for warrants with the magistrate to gain entry for the purpose of investigation. And we have moved the amendments here for members to express their views clearly. And I'd like to respond to members' viewpoints and their concerns. Well, the objective of the bill is, first of all, to protect the health of young people. And second, like Mister Tommy Chong said, under the liquor licensing regime, young person under the age of eighteen are already barred from consuming liquor on licensed premises. The legal loophole, however, is that at retail points, young persons are allowed to buy alcohol. And that is why we would like to plug the existing loophole in the law. And that is the basis of this amendment bill. Just now, Mrs. Regina Ip requested me to explain more about the harmful effects of alcohol and also the difference in values because of different backgrounds. So may I briefly go through the harmful effects of alcohol? It brings about immediate as well as long-term harmful effects on our health. And I think members have already touched on that. Of course, how you drink, the amount you drink may differ. Overexposure of alcohol may lead to brain malfunctioning, acute toxicity and death. And under the W H O, we have the International Agency for Research on Cancer, which classified alcohol as Group One carcinogen. So why should we focus on youths? Of course, there is an adverse impact on youths in particular. But on the whole, it negatively impacts on the general public and society, be it personal health and other kinds of harm. Even for adults with intake of, I mean, for youths, consuming alcohol may more easily lead to negative impact on their personal growth and their social skills because their brains are still developing. The H A, over the past five years, recorded cases requesting for assistance for alcoholism. Fifty to seventy percent or sixty to seventy percent of the drinkers consumed alcohol first time before they reached eighteen. And forty to sixty percent of the cases had the drinkers tasting alcohol for the first time before they reached sixteen. And according to the Department of Health survey, adolescent drinking, in particular among primary and secondary students, or binging, according to the Department of Health, there is a rising trend. We would particularly want to focus on retail points because when asked about the source of alcohol among primary students or youths, there are different ways. But according to primary students, ten percent of them bought alcohol on their own. For secondary students, thirty percent. This explains the importance of this amendment bill. Coming back to the amendments, in particular, for the second group of amendments being the more controversial ones, regarding the definition of domestic premises, it will be taken out from distribution points. So that if an offender supply or sells alcohol to a minor in domestic premises or use the domestic premises to harbor evidence to that offense, they will be captured. But if the magistrate is satisfied with reasonable grounds, that that is the case, a warrant will be issued. That means if there is anything that is inside the domestic premises, which is likely to be evidence to an offense to the new Part Five, the magistrate can then issue a warrant for the inspector to gain entry. So that's the condition. It doesn't mean that it comes with no limitations. But of course, there are also other provisions in the laws that allow entry into domestic premises to gather evidence, as mentioned by Mrs. Regina Ip and other members. We have looked up these provisions and from the Department of Justice, their view is that they acknowledge such provisions during the Bills Committee stage. Without clear provision, the inspector will not have the power to apply with the magistrate for a warrant to take enforcement action in the domestic premises. And this may constitute an apparent loophole in the law. Some members, including Mister Ben Chan, were concerned about the situation where in the domestic premises, there is the presence of alcohol as well as children. Now, we are concerned primarily on the elements in the course of business. It is not the possession of alcohol or the presence of a minor that constitutes an offense. Mister Holden Chow also offers a lot of valuable comments for us to consider, really, in future in terms of law enforcement or how the bill is to be interpreted. In terms of proportionality and necessity, well, Mister Holden Chow, as well as Mister Ray Chen, made a point about this. We reiterate that we understand members concerned that too much power may be delegated to the inspector. We've thoroughly considered the issue. We find it appropriate. In terms of the amendment, we've struck a balance. The objective of the bill is to prevent supply or sale of alcohol to a minor in the course of business. And that's the crucial point. Even if it is in the course of business, we need evidence to prove that, to prove that the offender has sold or supplied liquor, intoxicating liquor to a minor. And we will draw up relevant and corresponding guidelines for enforcement purpose. Some members said that the issue at the moment is not very serious. And these members have suggested that an amendment to the law should only be made when the problem becomes too serious. At the same time, some members supporting the amendment also said that if an apparent loophole is found as we scrutinize the law at the moment and if we do not scrutinize the bill properly and plug the loophole, we will not be fulfilling our responsibility. Very often, this happens during the scrutiny of different bills. It depends on the importance of the matter and we strive to strike a balance. We need to plug the loophole and we also need to understand the impact. Mister Holden Chow also mentioned that we should focus on enforcement action against distribution points at retail outlets instead of domestic premises. And indeed, we are going to focus on the street shops, retail liquor stores, which sells liquor to a minor. That will be our key priority. But if we do not include domestic premises in the definition, it will not be intact. And if there is reasonable suspicion that an offense has been committed contrary to the new Part Five of the ordinance, the inspector can apply for a warrant to gain entry. And only on this basis can he do so. the inspector can apply for a warrant to gain entry, and only on this basis can he do so. Of course, we cannot rule out the possibility that there is supply or sale of intoxicating liquor to a minor in the course of business. And I stress that this is an important element in the course of business. And only when these elements are found can an inspector apply for a warrant to conduct a search in the domestic premises. Some members are concerned whether the situation is as prevalent as we suggest. Members should understand that we have upstairs bars. It's a rather common scene, and we cannot rule out this opportunity. That is, if we were to take out domestic premises from the distribution points. And some members were concerned about the powers delegated to inspectors. I reiterate that there are checks and balances in the provisions. For example, the power is subject to reasonable hours, and also the inspector must have reasonable grounds to suspect that the person has committed an offense under Part Five.
For evidence with relation to the fifth step. And there's information or evidence showing that they are related to Section Five or the relevant offenses. And when exercising the duties under Section Five or Part Five, the relevant powers would be provided. And these would facilitate the work of the officers, and there are privacy-related issues. The relevant empowerment is deemed proportionate. For other pieces of legislation, such as noise control ordinance, laws on refuse, the Personal Data Protection Ordinance, there are similar provisions in place. So legislation should be forward-looking. So with the amendments to the bill, we have excluded residential premises from the inspector's powers to make inspections. So we have sought to strike a balance, as Mr. Stephen Ho said. The government must see ample evidence before they apply for search warrants from the court. And if the court is convinced that there is some reasonable suspicion, they would grant the search warrants. I like to talk about law enforcement because this is deemed important by many people. So we would like to give more. When the government comes up with enforcement guidelines, we would consider different potential issues arising from business operations. I'd like to thank members for suggesting scenarios which might arise, and these would certainly aid our work. The inspectors from the Department of Health would consider different situations because there are many ways some contraventions can be made. So we would consider all scenarios and come up with substantial and effective measures. Some members are concerned that if we are to inspect residential premises, what would be the arrangements? When the D H receives a report that liquor is allegedly sold to minors in residential premises, we would take oral evidence, and the inspectors would gather information online and from advertisements. And only with sufficient evidence, the inspector will apply for search warrant from the magistrate. And when vetting the relevant applications, the magistrate would ensure that there's enough evidence before granting the warrant. Normally, the magistrate would consider sufficiency of evidence, whether relevant offenses are being contravened, and whether the evidence gathered could support the case, etc. Only if the magistrate trusts that certain items are likely to be related to offenses prescribed in Part Five, they would issue a search warrant on the residential premises concerned. Some members suggested vice operations or undercover operations. If we are to carry out undercover operations, we have to employ minors. And there is some sensitivity to this. For example, labor protection, the safety of young persons, acting as undercover, so we must be very careful. However, we encourage the public to provide information to the D H. And after receiving a report or complaint, the D H will carry out enforcement actions. A number of members enquired about our manpower situation. And under the D H, there would be a new liquor control unit. And certain selected retail points would be inspected. These would include shops as well as premises that supply intoxicating liquor. And we would make sure that the laws are being complied with. We would deal with complaints and monitor remotely distributed liquor. And the Department of Health would make sure that this is enforced properly. We would also have backup units to support administrative and prosecution work, and we would also launch publicity and education. Mr. Ray Chen mentioned that criminals might sell or supply intoxicating liquor to minors, and the evidence might be scattered in different venues. So how could we proceed with the investigation? And this is exactly why we need to empower the inspectors to apply for search warrants from the court if needed, so that they can gather evidence. Criminals might also use some residential premises as a venue for supplying liquor to minors. So with when authorized by the court, the inspectors can enter the premises and gather evidence. Some members are concerned that in terms of remote distribution, the collection of evidence might be difficult. And according to forty-four one A, if such power is taken away from the inspectors, it would increase our difficulty in monitoring remote distribution. Mr. Tommy Chang and Mrs. Chiu Kafai raised some concerns. If a premises contain large volumes of liquor, would it be a case of illegal sale of liquor? And would inspectors use this as a reason for entering the premises? I reiterate that the sale of liquor drinks do not require a license. The bill does not contain any proposals to introduce licensing for liquor. The focus is on the sale of intoxicating liquor to minors. So Mr. Tommy Chang and Mr. Chiu can rest assured. I reiterate that the power to enter and search premises must be endorsed by the magistrates. And only with reasonable suspicion would such warrants be granted. So we have tried to strike a balance between personal data protection and gathering of evidence. Such empowerment is deemed proportionate and essential. So when drafting the enforcement guidelines, we will provide clear guidelines on what constitutes reasonable suspicion. We consulted the Department of Justice during the drafting, and our proposals were confirmed. Mrs. Chiu Kafai is concerned about disputes between customers and frontline staff. And all liquor-selling premises would have to put up a notice saying that no liquor would be sold to minors. The D H will establish guidelines for the trade and step up education and publicity. And the D H is urged to step up publicity and education efforts. On one hand, we are carrying out education efforts on the harms of alcohol to minors. And we will substantially reinforce our publicity efforts. And in two thousand and eleven, the D H published an action plan to reduce the harms of alcohol. And the action plan listed seventeen actions, and this is this legislative exercise has to do with one of them. For the remaining actions or items, work is underway, and we have achieved the objectives for some. Some are targeted towards some young people, some about health education. For young people, in two thousand and sixteen to seventeen, the D H promoted a alcohol-free campaign for young people or vision young and alcohol-free. So this is the vision we are trying to achieve. The objective is to raise overall awareness on drinking. And apart from young people, we want to educate teachers, parents, and the public. And we want to protect our young people from the harms of alcohol. So hopefully, we can achieve greater consensus on this issue. Finally, I hope that members can support our amendments on the two parts. We will deal with the concerns of members as much as we can. If the amendments are not passed, our future enforcement work will be affected. However, for places of distribution, we would enhance public education. And we will also pay attention to concerns, especially on online sales or websites. We will also send letters and emails to remind sellers to pay attention to the requirements. As the secretary has requested separate voting on her two groups of amendments, her first group of amendments will now be put to vote first. I now put the question to you that the first group of amendments moved by the secretary for Food and Health be passed. Would those in favor please raise their hands? Mr. Holden Chow claims the division. The bell will ring for five minutes. Ms. Hodean Chow claims a division. The bell will ring for five minutes.
Voting begins. Please check your votes. If there are no questions, voting is closed. I display the results. Forty-four members present, forty-three for. The question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the amendment passed. Quiet, please, members. I now put the question to you, that the second group of amendments moved by the secretary for food and health be passed. Will those in favor please raise their hands? Ms. Hodean Chow claims a division. The bell will be rung for five minutes. Voting begins. Please check your votes. If there are no questions, voting is closed. The result is displayed. Forty-two members present, twelve for, twenty-nine against. The question is not agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the amendment negatived. Clause seven as amended. As the first group of amendments to clause seven moved by the secretary early on has been passed by committee of the whole council, I now put the question to you, that clause seven as amended stands part of the bill. Will those in favor please raise their hands? Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. As the proceedings on the Dutiable Commodities Amendment Bill twenty seventeen have been concluded in committee of the whole council, council now resumes. Secretary for Food and Health. President, I now report to the council that the Dutiable Commodities Amendment Bill twenty seventeen has been passed by committee of the whole council with amendments. I move the motion that this council adopts the report. I now propose the question to you, that the motion moved by the secretary for food and health be passed. In accordance with Rule fifty-nine two of the rules of procedure, the motion shall be voted on forth with without amendment or debate. I now put the question to you as stated. Will those in favor please raise their hands? Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. Third reading. Dutiable Commodities Amendment Bill twenty seventeen.